Okay, welcome everyone. This is the Wellington Board of Education regular meeting on Tuesday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and I'm gonna call this meeting to order at seven oh four P M. We start our meetings with the pledge of allegiance if you would join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phil, I think there were some folks who popped into the waiting room if you wanna let them in.
Yep, my God, thank you.
Okay, we start our meetings with present to speak. We also have this section at the end of our agendas as well where we encourage members of the community to come to the Board of Education and speak with us. Well, I should say speak to us because this is a meeting held in public, not a public meeting, so we do not respond. It's not a dialogue. We ask that you start the, your presentation by raising your hand. You can use the reactions button on your screen to raise your hand, or you can come on video and raise your hand. That would be great. And you must start also with your full name and address for the record. That would be great. Nick, I do see that your hand is raised.
Hey, Nick, cell forty-nine Myrtle. Start off with praise to Center School. My son joined the school, I don't know, maybe halfway or a little bit more. And his growth within the school was, was awesome. And I give credit to the staff at the pre-K three level and the principal there, and thank you for what they do. I do have three other items I'd like to touch upon is hybrid meetings is another thing that we've talked about in the past, and I really hope that that can get entertained and start having that happen. I'll touch briefly on the concerns about the book that is well known by now. I just hope that there's a system where I don't believe in banning books. I have a hard time going that route. But I would think that we should default to having maybe in the beginning of the school year where permission slip or something goes to parents where they give authorizations for whatever topic, you know, religious, LGBT, whatever it may be, and they check off a box saying it's appropriate for my kid to have access to these books. I think that's a proper way maybe to handle that. And then the concern about safe space in the school, I just hope parents know that their kids do have a safe space when they may not be aware that they're being introduced to books or whatever it may be behind their backs. And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you again. And thank you to the staff at Center. They've been amazing.
James Marshall, I see that you've raised your hand. If you wanna come on next, that would be fine.
Hi, everybody. James Marshall, forty-six Osher Hill Road. Apologies for not being able to be on camera. My camera decided to quit on me halfway through today, and I can't get it back up. So I just wanted to touch briefly, I had the opportunity, I took the opportunity to tour the new Mansfield Elementary School at their open house over this past weekend. And do just wanna say that regardless of what the determination is here, I do think a purpose-built facility like that is really something that Wellington should aspire to, should still continue to aspire to, whether it be purpose-built or whether it be purpose-renovated. You know, just it had all of the features of a contemporary school design that allow for flexible education environment, flexible learning, collaborative, collaborative spaces, access to natural light, air, visibility of students, you know, openness to the corridor so that student monitoring is easier in a secure environment, separate access, all the fun stuff you expect to see, you know, in a, in a a new contemporary school and all of the fixtures and equipment that supported that educational mission as well. So I think it is I'm happy to see Mansfield, you know, go that route. I hope that we can, and I know you're working hard to do it, but I hope that we can continue to get, if not all the way there, at least part of the way there over the coming years with further efforts related to capital improvement. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Elaine Newcombe. I see you've raised your hand. You can come on next. Again, start with your full name and address, please. But for sure, I have to come off mute so that we can hear you.
There we go. Elaine Newcombe, twenty-eight Fermier Road. I anticipated the school building committee meeting last week. That was canceled. Watching for a rescheduled meeting, it did not seem likely that the school building committee's next meeting would be an item under old business of a Board of Education meeting. I contend that it is intended to reduce scrutiny by the public. I therefore think it is disingenuous to conduct any actionable business in that area tonight. The referendum vote, I believe, was one indicator that the public, the public's lack of trust in their town government. Thank you.
Does anyone else have their hand raised or want to participate in this portion of the present to speak? We will also have it at the end of the meeting. Okay, so next is the chairman's report. I'll just clarify that the item on our agenda later on under old business around the joint meeting discussion and next steps is not a joint meeting. It's the Board of Education's discussion about that past meeting. So it is not a meeting of the school building committee, just to clarify for those who are listening at home. I think we should just get right to it today. So let's jump in next with communications.
We had one communication that went out to the full board. It was from Jim Marshall. I think he just did a quick snapshot of his thoughts, but I think he was pretty clear in his writing. And I shared that with the full board.
Yep, thank you for that. Next then is the superintendent's report.
Yep, I'm gonna be brief tonight. So just a few quick staffing things. Anita Mackin, who has been a center school para for a long time, she was hired in October of two thousand and one, came in a year after my first year of teaching. She's retiring from education. Twenty-two amazing years in Wellington. Hats off to her. She's just been incredible for us. Nicole Maines, special education teacher, H M S, has resigned for another school district. And then this is a major hats off to Marshall McGinnley. As you know, we did not have our own speech and language teacher this year. We had hired outside agencies because of it's a shortage area, and we had a couple people leave. We actually hired Michelle Tharp. Michelle Tharp was with us all year long through an outside agency and decided that we were a good move for her, and she served us well. So welcome aboard to her and a big shout out to Marshall McGinnley for keeping services together for a special education in a shortage area that is beyond a shortage area in speech and language. And I will tell you that is the area that my daughter is looking to study in college, so.
Sure, you've got a job is go in a shortage area.
Correct. The, the other point I wanted to share tonight, and I'm gonna ask Mary Kay to unmute. She had field day today, so I'm glad she's still awake. But I wanted to just, I'm gonna share a couple of quick photos with you from the D C trip from being a first-year experience and, you know, going on a major trip as a superintendent. I didn't tell Mary Kay this. I held my breath all weekend long with my cellphone. I did not get any phone calls. I got amazing pictures. And so what I'll share with you real quick, let me just, sorry, I'm on the wrong thing here. I'm just gonna share a quick couple. So there's one, that's the, the crew that went, Mary Kay, how many students did you have go?
We had thirty-four students join us on the trip out of forty-two total eighth graders.
So large group. Just some of the simple stuff that they did. Real exciting. The, the feedback was great, and I'll let Mary Kay talk about it. I just figured it, let the pictures share first. She sent me what I'll call a book of pictures, and I just wanted to share some of that, some of the quick highlights so you can see some things. So Mary Kay, if you wanna chime in and just share overall trip feedback for the board.
So first of all, I would like to express my appreciation to the Board of Education for approving this trip and for allowing us to go. I think that it was pretty amazing experience for our kids. They conducted themselves in such a respectful and amazing way. They were complimented whenever we went someplace, which is always makes your heart full because you know you love your kids, but when they can go outside of the state and still conduct themselves with respect, it was fantastic. We got to see amazing sights. The bonding and connection that we had with each other was really terrific. The chaperones were outstanding. And I was just really happy that our kids got a chance to see our nation and the capital of our nation and kind of be immersed in the history of what has brought us to this place. They got a chance to go to the African-American Museum and really understand the racial strife that's occurred, which I think is very, very important. We got a chance to spend a tremendous amount of time at the Holocaust Museum, which really allowed them to see just what the, what history was like in, by experiencing it. We had an amazing, amazing experiences in the arts. We went to see a great show called Sheer Madness. It was very, very busy. We, we got to see a lot of amazing memorials and, and I think that they have come to appreciate, or at least are starting to appreciate more our history and where we all are from. My hope is that we continue the strip annually. I think it's something that the eighth graders can really look forward to. I know that this year, I mean, it was, it's a, it's not a cheap trip. It's expensive. It's a definite investment for families, but I am sure or hopeful that if we start the fundraising earlier and start actual, you know, money towards a goal earlier, we will have less, the on, on the onus of, on the families. I'm really pleased that the Board of Education was able to help us with students who required financial support because I would hate to see anybody who is unable to fund the trip themselves be not, not able to come. The students who did not join us did not join us because of financial reasons. So that I was very pleased with. They joined us for reasons other than financial. And I think that the timing towards the end of the year was very helpful because it didn't cause an exclusionary atmosphere, which is something that I have tried desperately to not have. I want everybody to feel included, and if they didn't go on the trip, I didn't want them to feel like, oh, my gosh, I'm not part of anything anymore. On the day, a couple of days after the trip, we did have our eighth grade dance, which is sponsored by eighth grade parents. And the, the energy from the kids and the inclusion of the kids, it was just so beautiful to see. As a principal, this, this grade, this eighth grade is very, very special to me. So it's gonna be an interesting night on Thursday. I'm not a pretty crier. I just want everyone to know. This is not gonna be nice. But they, they definitely have paved the way for other groups, and their behavior was impeccable. So I, I credit their families for raising them well, and I'm just so happy that we had the chance to go. So thank you so much for that opportunity.
Yeah, I, I think when, when you do a first trip like this, we know other districts have done this. You, you hope to set the bar pretty high, and from what I understand, just across the board, it went extremely well. So kudos to M K for taking a risk, cuz this is a risk, right? Trying to do something that's different and big and not just keeping things status quo. So hats off to you, young lady, for a tremendous trip and providing an experience for our kids that they probably wouldn't have had otherwise. So thank you to you.
Thank you, and, and thank you for calling me young cuz that's away from this whole thing.
Brianna, you wanna come off mute?
Yes, can I just, were you happy with the travel organization that you used, Mary Kay?
I was. I mean, you know, like any first-time experience, there's some kinks that we needed to work out. We did do a survey of the kids afterwards to see what they liked the best, so we, we wanna be able to kind of meet the needs of our groups. And I think that doing a pre-survey for the kids next year is really important, too. We also asked for feedback from our chaperones. So I wanted to make sure that I had input from everybody. The, the company that we worked with was excellent. She was really responsive and a great person to work with, and her tour guide was really awesome. But it was a, it, when I say breakneck speed, I mean, we did not, I mean, my Fitbit was like, I don't know who is wearing this right now, but it is not the same woman. You know, and like, now I'm getting this like, hey, you hit this goal three days ago. What's going on? It's like, oh, okay. So, you know, it, it was really, really busy. We, if we did it again, we might do some minor tweaks, maybe less things, but more time at each thing, or more mindful planning of like, okay, you have eighth graders who have been on a bus for eight hours. Maybe a quiet tour is not where you wanna go next. Maybe you wanna do something more active. You know, so it's just, it's just those tiny tweaks that we probably will need to do, but having done it once, now I can say, okay, let's try this or let's try that. You know, one of the things that we need to think more about is meals and where we're actually getting the food and how we're actually getting the food to kids because not every meal was suitable for every kid, and, and maybe we just need to tweak that a little bit. So it's just minor things, but having been through it once, this company would be great to work with again. She was really great. I mean, communication was awesome. And her guide was really, really good. Like, she was on the bus with us from the day, the minute we got on the bus. She was awesome with communication, and I really didn't, I mean, I had to watch the kids, but I didn't have to think about where we were going or anything. She really had it all planned.
I'm really glad to hear that.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Mary Kay, I'd just like to thank you and the chaperones who went with you. That was wonderful of all of you to, to spend that time with the children. So thank you so much, all of you.
Thank you. It was actually really nice. It was, they were really enjoyable to be around.
Always good to hear. Okay, anything else on the superintendent's report?
No, that was, that was it.
Moving on to the financial report then.
M K, feel free to go crash. So I sent you a snapshot this, I think it was this week, time kind of flies, maybe it was last week, to give you a sense of where things are at. We knew we were spending money on projects, and, and when I start spending money on projects, I'm not necessarily looking at by program, I'm looking at need. So you're gonna see now Center Schools fifty-six thousand dollars in the hole, but the overall budget still is in the positive, okay? So I'm gonna tell you that I've been working with both principals, with Matt Jensen and Steve Foligno, the two maintenance custodians, just to fix as many things as we can in the short timeframe and window we have. And so when I say that, we were hoping to repair a chimney, and basically everyone was like, well, we can't do that until the fall. That doesn't work with where our finances are. However, we are doing a lot, and I sent them an email to, to remind them of that today to, to manage all these projects, whether it's outlets, it's plumbing, it's, there's heating items. We've got the sidewalk project happening, that's C I P. We've got the, the fire panels going in the summer. There are a lot of product, projects, rugs that they're working on, and they're, the majority of them are coming out of this budget. So I will continue to, I, I like floor the gas. We did a bunch of projects, and now we're slowing down. We're breaking again. We're seeing where we're at. And I really do believe by the end, this three sixty-two is going to be very, very close to our, our two seventy-five. And so we said we were, and we would return two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And one hundred and fifty thousand would go, we would request back to put in our non-lapsing fund. And that one twenty-five would then go into the general fund. I will tell you that we have an additional auto district placement that is unbudgeted. So from the standpoint of that one hundred and fifty thousand coming back to us next year, it is critical. And so it's, it's what the purpose of that non-lapsing fund is, but of that three sixty-two, the money that's left to get down, the, we're looking at some things that we're just, we were waiting on quotes for, to be honest with you, to make sure that we're following our purchasing procedures. But we're getting down there, and, and our, our crew has done a good job pestering vendors to get those quotes and get the, the work scheduled. And so it's actually exciting to see a lot of this worked on. This is not something I've experienced as an administrator or as a superintendent, being able to fix this many things. And some of them are a few thousand dollars, and that seems small. But when you're only budgeting a certain, a small amount for maintenance, that takes up a chunk. So, you know, a couple classrooms of carpet could take up half of your maintenance budget, so. Questions about where we are, it's, it's, you know, I think it's pretty, pretty straightforward at this point, and we just keep plugging along.
Okay, I am not seeing anyone's hand, but Laura, you came on screen.
Yeah, 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 I was just, the outplacement, is that reflected in here, or is that going to be for next year?
Not yet, and it's, this year is mi, it's minor. It's very, very minor, just because of what's, what was left in school when it occurred. What I will tell you is that next year is where the, you'll, you'll see the full amount in this, unless something drastic changes, which it could. But right now, we're planning for a full outplacement next year for the student and is not budgeted. Then again, that could be a move in, that could be someone that's, you know, currently district that's gone out. There's a lot of ways that can happen, so. Want people to think I'm giving.
We'll address that when it happens, but after we've closed the books and we know how much we have left, we will make that reference, that referral back to the Board of Finance. Okay, so next on the agenda is new business. So let's start with the approval of our May meeting minutes from May ninth. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes from the May ninth meeting.
Thank you, Laura. Do I have a second? And we need you. I saw your hand, but you're on mute.
I will second them.
Thank you, Ann. Okay, any comments or questions on the May ninth minute meetings, minute, meeting minutes? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of accepting the minutes from the May ninth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Board of Education, signify by saying aye. Abstentions? Okay, Arthur abstains. Arthur, whenever we have, it's not unanimous. We go through a roll call vote, just so that it goes into the record more easily. So I'm just gonna go through it quickly. Laura?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Brianna?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Arthur?
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay, so that's on the record. Thank you. Motion passes. The curriculum committee met in April. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for that meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the April curriculum meeting.
Thank you, Ann. Do I have a second?
Tracy Anderson, I'll second that.
Thank you, Tracy. Let's do a roll call vote again. We'll just go through everyone again and say aye, nay, or abstain. Laura?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Brianna?
Aye.
Arthur?
Abstain.
And Michelle, aye. Okay, motion passes. Next on new business is substitute pay for twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Yep, so the, the board approves the substitute pay each year. I reviewed subpay for just what we currently have versus what the region was doing for twenty-two, twenty-three. I am gonna request that you increase the subpay by five dollars for each of the categories, and it would apply to all the categories. So the non-certified being paraprofessional, that would go up five dollars. Certified staff, which is the teaching staff, would go up five dollars.
Phil, you mean five dollars per day, not per hour, correct?
Correct, per day. Sorry, did I say hour?
No, no, but you didn't give it a time period, and I wouldn't want people to think we're, you know, tripling people's rates or something.
No, and I'll give you, I'll give you the totals. The certified teacher staff would go up five dollars per day. The certified teacher staff with, who has license share would go up five dollars, and the nurses would go up five dollars. So the, the numbers, we, again, this puts us in the ballpark of where everybody else is at. A paraprofessional would be a hundred and ten dollars a day. Certified staff, which means bachelors, would be a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day. A certified staff with a teaching license would be one forty-five, and a nurse is two hundred and thirty. I'm gonna be really blunt with you. I had to go and talk to our, our, one of our nurses about this, just to get her take on it because we close in on about what they're making. And are not, the amount we pay for subnurses seems high, but when you compare to what nurses are making in hospitals or in other facilities, it's like off twenty dollars an hour. So I'm very, very thankful for our two nurses, Marcia and Lynn. And that's what you have to pay to get subnurses. So again, it's, if you're gonna make a motion out of this, it's basically just to increase each category by five dollars a day.
Okay, do I have a motion to that effect? Or are there additional questions that people have before we move? Go ahead, Laura.
I have one question. So adding five dollars in each category will make us competitive like with Mansfield, with Tallinn?
Yes, yes.
Geographical.
Stafford, Mansfield, yes, Tallinn's. Yep, some were a little bit higher, some were a little bit lower. Some people choose to pay a certified teacher a little bit more. Some don't recognize a certified teacher. They just pay them their normals, teacher subpay. So I think, to be honest with you, we were on the cutting edge of that. We, I think we started that, paying certified staff a higher amount, and everyone copied us. And so there's several people now that are paying a certified teacher pay. It, you have to be competitive to get those people in the rooms. So, and this keeps us in that playing field.
That was my concern, make sure that we're increasing it enough because it is so difficult to get substitute teachers.
Yeah, we are.
Great.
I will move that we increase the substitute pay in each category by five dollars a day.
Thank you, Ann. Is there a second?
Go ahead, Arthur.
Okay, second by Arthur Christians. Other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to increase substitute salaries for all the different categories by five dollars a day, signify by saying aye and raising your hand?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, moving ahead. Next item of business is cafeteria staff.
Yep, so this is similar. You approve their, whatever their increases each year. There's definitely funds in this account to do this. My suggestion would be that you match the same increase that the W E S S group, that non-certified union group that they've received, and this, the, our, sort of, our school cafeteria staff is not part of a union. And so it's on the board to determine their increase, and I, my suggestion would be match what that percentage has been for everybody else. That increase.
Is that two point seven five? Is that, yes, okay.
Questions? A motion?
Say, Laura? I'll make a motion to increase the cafeteria staff pay by two point seven five percent.
Thank you.
Can you put a date on that, Laura, for?
For twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Thank you.
Always good to be exact.
Tracy Anderson, I'll second that.
Thank you, Tracy. Additional questions, thoughts? Okay, they certainly are hardworking staff and do a really great job trying to bring nutritious foods for our kids and our staff, so appreciate their work. All those in favor of the motion to increase the salaries for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year for this cafeteria staff by two point seven five percent, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 And that was unanimous. And that was unanimous as well, so we can move on to the next item. I just wanna say, uh. We're we're making tremendous progress. I don't wanna jinx ourselves, but good job, everybody. Uh, virtual meetings. So, um, this item is on the agenda because of the pandemic has, uh, the emergency has passed. It's become much more endemic. Not to say that it is past. I already know two people um in my nearer circle of colleagues at work who've had COVID in the last six weeks. But um, it is something that we uh had been asked to bring up. To consider the options before us as a board. There are no requirements one way or the other for us to have to move one way or the other. Um, we we have a full uh authority at the moment to stay virtual. Um, so I'd like to open a discussion on the pros and cons of that, if people have thoughts. Uh, Arthur? I I think get your hand, Arthur. I apologize. That part's not blurred out and I it, I'm just wave it a little maybe when you raise your hand and that'll help me see it against the background.
Nope, that's fine. Um. So interestingly, um, this is something that I emailed as well to talk about. Um, it's one of those things where. The pandemic brought a huge negative and also a minor positive. I'm, you look at all the. Parents that are just more involved by virtue of not having to attend meetings and and being able to be on the computer and listen while they do things in the background, but at the same time. I do think that meetings like this should have the option to be in person. Um, so people can see you and come up to you and maybe talk to you afterwards or beforehand. Um, and when they are present to speak, if they are passionate enough and they wanna speak in front of actual people, I absolutely respect that. And I I feel that. The best course of action for this board would be to move to a hybrid model where you still have the option for a Zoom meeting and board members still have that option, but. Also that there is a place where we congregate and hold the meeting. Um, that the public could attend in person.
Thank you. I saw someone else's hand. Laura?
Um, so actually, Arthur, you said just what I was going to say pretty much. Um, I. Again, with the pandemic going to Zoom, um, we learned how to do remote meetings. Many people who had difficulty attending meetings. Um, had the opportunity to join our meetings, especially parents of young children, that it might be difficult to get up and leave the home. Um, but I think there is great value in being together in a space and there's great value in the conversations that happen. Uh, before, after, side conversations, as you said, being able to talk to people, you know, after the meeting. I think that is really, really valuable. And it's something that that I have really missed. I've only ever done this um through Zoom uh coming on in twenty twenty. Um. There are issues with hybrid. Um, and I understand, you know, the difficulties of hybrid, um, hybrid teaching was really a nightmare. Um, if you talk to any teachers, because having, it's kind of, you can focus on the people in front of you or you can focus on your screen. But trying to do both at the same time is very difficult. But I do think that there is a way to figure that out so that. People who wish to be together in that space can do that and those who have trouble attending can still come in remotely. Um, so I would agree that, um, you know. Now that. Now would be a good time for us to try to figure out. How to do a hybrid meeting effectively, um, so that. Everybody feels as though they're actually part of the meeting. Oh, the other thing I meant to say with with hybrid is it does allow us to participate when we travel, which is something. That I do quite a bit and I have come in remotely to many meetings from other states and other countries. So, um, yeah, so that was the last thing.
Thank you, Laura. Others with thoughts?
Phil, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um. I I would. Like the board to consider. In their conversation here, the, as other districts have gone hybrid.
Yeah.
Um, and the work that's been done and and the pros and cons behind it all. But what's the impact to the board? So Laura just made a great comment that it's, you know, when you're, listen, I've I've participated in a meeting when I was a away. It's very convenient. But I want, I'm gonna ask you on a day-to-day basis, on a typical board meeting. Uh, is the expectation, if we're hybrid? Would the expectation be that the board does their best to be in person? Or is it that the board has that decision as well? I think that's important for you to weigh on and I'll tell you that. Other places that I've gone hybrid have requested that, not. Required, but requested that committee members or board members are in person. So I think that's important for you to weigh as you consider this.
Thank you for that, Phil. Um, I, my hesitation with hybrid meetings is the person who's chairing the meeting. So that it's especially hard to chair a meeting where you have a member who is on the screen, who cannot hear the full conversation, the audio. Now, again, most of the meetings I've watched have been in the upstairs town hall. Uh, the Board of Ed has traditionally used the downstairs town hall meeting space. Um, so I don't know if the acoustics are better or worse in there. Certainly the ceiling is lower. Um. I know we struggled to get good camera in there when we were just taping the meetings because the meeting room is long and wide, and so it was always going and swinging back and forth, trying to get. Uh, people's faces uh on camera. So, um, I do have some concerns about audio quality. And also video quality, if not every of, every one of us are in the meeting. Um, and similarly for the people in the audience that they're able to hear us. Certainly when we're on the screen altogether, people can see our faces a lot more clearly, a lot closer up. You can hear our voices because we're, you know, each of us have a microphone. We don't have that same technology capacity at this moment, and that might be something that we wanna think about in terms of. How to make our meeting technology work for us better. Um, than it does now if we were going to go to hybrid. We, I should note that we also have the option to go back to fully in-person. And just recording the meetings and putting them up on YouTube for people to watch. Uh, at their own schedule and then allowing people to continue to comment uh via email and letter. Um, for those who can't attend a meeting. Um, certainly we've done that in the past. That's the way we operated before COVID. Um, and again, while the video was not perfect, um, it did really engage parents a lot more than we had previously. But we did not have the taping. So that is also an option to put on the table. Tracy, I see you're off mute. Did you have something?
Uh, no, I mean, I. I think I see the benefits to hybrid as well, or at least. I'd I'd hate to lose. The participation that we've had because I really feel like we've had so much more participation while we've been on Zoom. So. Going all in person might, we might lose that.
Um, certainly beforehand, um, prior to COVID and even before we were videotaping, um, it would be unusual to have five people in the audience. And we typically have fifteen to twenty now. So the numbers are more than four times what they used to be now that we're on Zoom. So that is worth noting. Laura?
The two things to to Phil's point. My thought, my idea was that. Um, board members would try to be in person, you know, if at all possible, but able to zoom in if you are out of town. So. We can talk about that, but but that's definitely a very good point. Um, because it doesn't, it doesn't help anything to be in person if your board members are still zooming in and. Uh, the people who show up can't actually interact with them. And then second, um. To Tracy's point, I, you know, we have had so much more participation. Um. With Zoom and, you know, I mentioned before and and Arthur did also about parents being able to attend more easily. I think it would be a really good idea for us to put this out to parents, um, before we make a decision and ask. Um, our parents. What would they like, you know, um? You know. If it's hybrid. Again, people can attend, but it is difficult to manage. Um, your focus on who's in person and who's on the screen. And you also, Michelle made, you know, points to. The technology piece, you know, being able to hear people and see people. Um, but I think this is something we really should get some input from, from the parents. Um. What they think and and where they'd like to go.
And I have a couple of questions about technology. I think I'd like to do a little more research on, uh, if there was, uh, additional uh equipment that we might need. Brianna or Ann, are there additional comments or thoughts you wanna add to the conversation?
I would just say I don't wanna abandon Zoom. Whichever way we go, I have found this really beneficial as a parent to be able to attend meetings. When other things in our lives are going on and I really believe there are lots of others who have had more access and been able to pop in. And I do not think that a video. Although you still see the same information, I think it's different to watch it after the fact rather than being present, um, virtually in real time.
Yeah.
Um, I agree that it's important that parents be able to attend. Um, I also agree with you, Michelle. It's a little hard. To follow, um, who's on screen and who's in person and. The owl kind of going from side to side. So I think if we could get the technology to work really well, it would be fine.
Okay. Um, then I'd like to move to table this discussion for a future meeting once we've had a little bit more input. There's uh no urgency since, uh, we have. Slightly lighter and shorter meetings in the summer. Um, so, uh, certainly in the next meeting or two, we'll have more information. Um, Phil could, um. You could, uh, would it be possible for you to, um, collect some information or put that out in one of the last backpacks? Is, are there still backpacks going out? I think should be my question.
Yeah, we can easily do another and we can do a separate, I could just do a separate letter. It's probably. Gonna grab more information. The only thing is. I think it's important to remember that it's about community members too and not just, um. Parents, I can see if they can put. The survey link on the the email blast and, you know, on their Facebook page and things, just a, it's gonna be a simple survey, you know. How how to be. Get the the data we're looking for.
That sounds good. Okay, so I move that we table this. Uh, are there others in agreement with that? Do we have a second? Do we wanna vote? We ready? I don't have my little form in front of me, so maybe I need a second.
I can second it if that was a mo.
Thanks, Laura. Okay. All those in favor of tabling the discussion till our next meeting signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, uh, we'll come back to this then and put this on the agenda for next month. Okay. Um, Phil, we have someone in the waiting room with that, just a phone number. So if you wanna take a look at that, I'll let. Uh, next on our agenda is our old business. Um. Since we met, we had a joint meeting with the Board of Education, the Board of Selectmen to discuss, uh, the school facilities and, um, there's. Some follow-up that our board has to, um. Bring before it, um, as a result of that meeting. Uh, the overall, the meeting went on for three hours. There's a lot of differing opinions and and thoughts and conversation that was had. Um. Uh, another challenge of having an in-person meeting was there were a lot of us instead of doing just seven of us. It was, uh, certainly a large group. But I think that one was beneficial, that it was in person to be able to, to manage that larger group. Um, and one of the things that I took away from the meeting. Was that we really need. To, uh, invest now in a full facility study, not just an update of the Friar report. But a full facility study that will, um, look at what we have. And give us both updated costs and some suggestions and ideas about where we go from here. Uh, I don't know exactly what that type of a facility study is called, other than a facility study. I'm sure there is technical language that, um, others would recommend us to help with that. Um, but, um, I'd love to get people's thoughts and feelings on, you know, what we think our next step should be following that conversation that we had in the past month. Ann and Brianna, especially since you're on the committee, I'd love to hear from you. And oh, Arthur, get, if you put your hand over your face, I can see that.
Yeah, I know the.
Ann first and then Arthur.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ann.
Um, I think it would be wonderful if we could hire someone to come in and do a really complete, I'm not talking about. Um, twenty dollars per square foot. I'm talking about what would it cost to, you know, renovate the bathrooms and what would it cost to. Install air conditioning and. So that we really get a very clear picture of what we would have to pay to fix all of those, um. Different problems that we have in both of the two schools. I mean, Phil has done a wonderful job putting Band-Aids on things. I know we have a two septic systems. That are just waiting to be replaced, you know, so we really have a whole lot of things that need to be done. But I think the first thing we need to do is have a really clear picture of exactly what has to be done and exactly how much it's going to cost.
Arthur?
Um. Is this something, and maybe Phil, you might know the answer to this. Is this something that EMCOR could do because they already service our schools?
So they're really mechanical. Um, do you, you'd have to put this out to bid. And you want someone that's gonna be also pri- prioritize this. When EMCOR was brought on, they basically inventoried all of our mechanical items, but that's all they did. They didn't go back and look at. You know, some of the specific plumbing things, like they weren't in the bathrooms and looking at. Um, stalls or ADA, they were simply looking at that condensing unit is from nineteen seventy-eight. Uh, you can still get parts, you're good to go, or that's from nineteen seventy-eight, you can't get parts and hope it doesn't break. Um, that's really what they did. We had a logbook, um, when they initially came in. Um, I think. You know what Ann is talking about is is a significantly bigger lift than EMCOR could do, but I don't know that for certain. Um, they might be someone to bid on this. Um. But you really, I think what Ann was. Trying to say at the end, there was some level of prioritization. Um, I think that's important for what you would want to come out of some sort of major facility study. For the schools and how you prioritize those things, um, in a succinct, you know, ma- manner.
And along with prioritization, um, some grouping, like some projects have to be, there's a sequence to things that, um, I would love for them to include with that. Uh, others? I don't know, okay. Tracy?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that we need to do something. Question is. Um. Seems to me like the Friar report costs. In several amount and now it's been. Many more years, so where does that money come from since we've already paid for, we've already put a budget. Together and that's been approved.
I can, I can answer that if you want, Michelle.
Go ahead, Phil.
So, um. They, the the CIP committee put forward a million dollars. Into the plan, into the budget that passed. That million dollars, what's that?
Was it the CIP budget or the regular?
It's in CIP, yes, and it's really intended for, they listed it as SBC Board of Education fixing, um, buildings. That's how it went through. Um, the Board of Ed would have access to that money as long as you went through your proper channels. And I believe the fund it's in, it has to go through town meeting, okay? So, um. To do a study like that is is gonna cost a pretty penny. But for long-term planning, if if the the, you know, obviously the the vote, the palette wasn't for the project that was there. But for long-term planning, you need, uh, a a ten-year facility plan. Probably beyond your schools, but, uh, we're targeting our schools, right? That's our job. Um, you need that and and like you said, Michelle, bunch together, you know, is is step one. Solar roof and ventilation because they all go hand in hand. Um, that's chunk one. Uh, what's chunk two? What's chunk three? What's chunk four? Um, and so if you are going to, you would have the ability as a board of education. Um, to bring, to put out your MFP. Um, and to find out what it was gonna cost and then bring that to town meeting for approval. And utilize that portion of the million dollars as long as it passed at town meeting.
Thank you. That's, that's helpful. Um, Arthur?
Um, this may be a question more for for SBC, um, but Phil, you might not, I'm just gonna bring it up here. Did Colliers, when they were hired, do anything to assess our buildings or did they just, was it, was their focus only on? The consolidated school? Cause I know they did an assessment for. Um, the re- um, I guess renovation of Hall to a consolidated school, but did they do? Any, any work with Center at all, just to give? I guess renovation of Hall to a consolidated school, but did they do any any work with Center at all, just to give an idea of what it might be?
No, not really, because the focus was a pre-K through eighth grade building and Center School was not gonna be an option for a pre-K through eighth. Um, so they spent more time at Hall because of if we were trying to go there. Um, the only thing they do it did was take that Friar report and look at the square footages and go, okay. Here's your CIP plan that you have. Here's all your projects and then bumped it up to twenty twenty-five dollars, which is when if we did a new building, so you had apples to apples. Um, and so they tried to use the projects that were in, you know, whether it's CIP. And in the Friar report to bring that those dollars amount, but really it's a lot of that work, Arthur, was by square footage. And so sometimes it's different and and this is, you know, giving you the plumbing e- e- experience that we've had. Uh with plumbers coming in and going, I will do the things that are in the bathroom, but if it's anything in the wall. I want nothing to do with it because we could open up a significant can of worms. So that stuff that we have to fix, we need to know that. I don't know how they get that information without opening a wall up. I, you know, that'd be part of something that would why we would have to hire someone. But again, there's it's, you know, you ha- to get a really good picture for your facilities over a period of time. That was probably the biggest takeaway that SBC night, right? Uh it was, you need the facility study. Um, and you need the information to make, you know, informed decisions. That's what you're trying to do. Um, and within reason of dollars, because that's the other thing that everybody heard was it's expensive. The last thing I'll say is. The the concern about grants, um. I can't tell you whether or not if I applied for a grant today, uh whether the OSCGR would. Accept it or deny it because we had a current school building committee. Um, I can't tell you that because we said it last time, we we, you know, Eric and I are both very vocal about this, that our project could get canceled. Um, and they accepted our grant and then the director canceled it. So uh it could go either way. They're kind of following statute now. My feeling is if the Board of Ed and and you know, this is my opinion, right? I'm gonna give you my my two cents on this. Is that if you are, we are going to move in the direction of. Let's determine what it costs to fix our buildings for where they're at uh to maintain our two buildings. And you're gonna do a facility study. We do not need the school building committee to do that. We need to hire a professional that can help us do that work that takes a big RFP to do that. Um, to to go into our schools, to look at our plans, to evaluate items. Um, we don't need a school building committee to do that. And so. If you go that route and that's a recommendation, the recommendation you make. Um, my suggestion would be that to ask the SBC for a report on their work. Um, knowing that you you, this may, report may take a year to gather. Information because it's, we're asking a lot and just time-wise, it's summer. It may end up at another school building committee at some point in time. Um, but at this point in time, I'm not sure that if you're going to take on that level of work, it doesn't require the committee that we currently have.
Uh question Phil, would we have to have this can the current school building committee stay convened in order to create a report?
Um, so.
Not up to us whether the school building committee stays or goes. We could make a recommendation back to the selectmen. And to the school building committee itself, but it's not our committee.
Right, I think um if you were gonna make the recommendation, I think it would actually go to the school building committee. Um, because they could say, look, it, we got some feedback from the Board of Ed. Um, we feel like they're going to, we're gonna uh, they would like us to go on the route. Uh let me rephrase that. The Board of Ed wants to go on the route of a facility study to get further additional prices. They don't feel like the. SBC is needed at this point. They would write the report. SBC would submit their report to the um and it would have probably have to be voted on, to be honest with you. So they do need to have the committee. Once that. Report was submitted to the selectmen. I believe that would be the end of the committee until it was in in that charge until. There was ever a time that the selectman wanted to form a new one. If it was just your day-to-day, uh and I'm gonna call it your day-to-day operations, you know, your oil tanks, your roof projects, you don't need. A separate school building committee like that that's existed, you could act as that. Um, as long as you have someone like a Colliers, that's helping lead that charge because they're the. The the they were the lead on the roof project and getting all that paperwork and they know all the needs that we have to have. To get through OSCGR, it's um, they say they just made the process easier. Um, believe it when I see it.
So um at this point, we're we're not considering um who would help us manage any work that is identified, but our first. Item of business would be the uh the facility, the facility study, and I just wanna clarify that this is only a school facility study. We do not have under our purview anything other than the two existing school buildings for them to evaluate. Unless you also wanna throw in the superintendent's office suite for evaluation. I don't know if there's anything in there um that needs to be checked out. I don't know if you've got heat or or air conditioning in there, Phil, but that's an option, but school facilities only. Not anything else. Certainly the town, the Board of Selectmen has that option to consider if they want to do something along those lines and we would encourage them to do so. Um, are there additional thoughts? Brianna and then Anne.
I have a lot of thoughts about this topic.
I'm sure.
And I try really hard to. Like keep it. So it makes sense to other people's heads. Right now in mind, it's very swirly, swirly. Okay, um, so. If we were to do a facility study of our school buildings. What is the like rubric or standard? Like what are we trying to do here? Who decides what's? Acceptable, what is fixing, what's maintaining, what's improving? Because I just keep on hearing that word maintaining and it's making me crazy. Maintaining to me is like status quo, keep it where it is. I don't accept that from our students and I sure as heck don't wanna give it to them. Okay, we need to like make some progress here. We cannot keep putting on Band-Aids. We're just gonna be stuck in the same spot forever and ever and over and over. So I would appreciate knowing what this professional thinks problems are. And I would appreciate some guideline about where we're trying to go. Like, there should be levels of improvement, I feel like. Um, here is how you fix this thing that is wrong. Here's how you can fix it and better it so that you won't have to do so much maintenance or it won't fix again. Here's how you take what you have and make it um better and sustainable going forward in the future. Like, to me, that's different levels. So how in-depth can someone like that get?
Uh I think the answer is they can get as in-depth as we ask them to. So if that's something that we want them to look at in terms of, you know, how do we meet, you know, the barest minimum safety approach. Or to how do we make it uh uh, you know, a really good work and learning environment for students? We can ask them to give us recommendations within that spectrum. So I think that that your ideas are really good, Brianna.
We could probably use a a a portion of the Ed spec to be honest with you, Brianna, just to talk about. Cause that's the the the. The and I think James Marshall has been the champion of this saying, um, you can fix things and I think this is your point, Brianna. But you're not impacting education when you're just putting a a new roof on. We're trying to do both. And so that could be part of your facility study, just to say, okay. What's the fix? What what items will impact educational spaces? You know, you do a bunch of those things. Um, and it's again, it's prioritization of costs. And you know, you, but the Board of Ed would be the driver of that. And uh providing feedback and what you were looking for, knowing that um. It's gotta go through. The town.
But also noting that we have to put certain uh qualifications or or requirements in any request for proposals that we put out. So for example, someone should have experience working with school buildings. You know, we don't want someone whose focus is entirely, you know, public works facilities, even if they've had municipal experience. Because they have very different needs. So it would be important for us to have somebody who understands. Uh Ed specs and what we're trying to do as opposed to just a facility owned by a town.
Yes, and I think the age of our buildings and the current status of them makes a difference too because. To hear that companies would refuse a project because of the potential domino effect or the unknowns is really concerning to me. Um, and as far as materials go, I mean, are there certain pipes or what have you that would need to be replaced? Because there isn't a new fit or match for them in the current things that we have these days, the current technology. I just. Have a lot of worries about things like that. And again, I. Would love to say, I mean, I know there's not like money falling from the sky, but I I want the best for our students and our staff. Um, they work hard, they deserve it, they have earned it, if you ask me. And so. Nothing less than the best is acceptable. So if we're trying to maintain, we're trying to fix, we're trying to Band-Aid, no. Let's make it better. Not just up to code, not just up to par. That's great, but it's not enough, if you ask me. So that's where I think I get a little bit stuck.
Thanks. Anne, did I see your hand too?
Yeah, I agree with Brianna. Instead of a new roof that has to have solar panels and it has to have air conditioning so that we're moving into the. The the new century. Um, I also um wanted to suggest that maybe one of the first things we need to do is. Um, make a motion to get a facilities manager or a group that would conduct this. Facility study for us.
And I don't think they're called a facilities manager. I think we would put out a request for proposals from firms and consultants to do a facility study. I think you then, if you need, a facilities manager might help us do the applications and, you know, uh manage any projects that might come out of this. But I don't think you hire the manager first.
Okay.
It makes sense for us to to gather information and do our research first.
Okay.
Uh, go ahead, Brianna.
And then. I just wanna, it's Mr. Fralino and.
And Matt Jensen.
Jensen.
And then I'm gonna get your names, guys, okay? I I promise, we'll make that like my summer goal. Those, I mean, Phil, you know, those buildings inside and out, upside down and backwards, but those individuals. Have the knowledge that really, like, we are gonna need that. And this person who's in charge of all of this. I would love for um our custodial heads to have the time. And the support and whatever they need so that they can meet with this person and get completely a full picture and on the same page. And I know those gentlemen will do that. Um, I know they put their heart and souls into our school buildings, so that I'm not worried about. But I, how can we support that relationship? Because it is, it is critical.
Brianna, part of, part of uh, again, Jim Marshall here is being an expert on this. Um, it's his business, right? Talking about visioning and making sure you're getting feedback from the right people. They're part of that process, right? Everybody has serves a a a role. The Board of Ed serves a role, teaching staff. They they serve a role, the community serves a role, our maintenance folks serve a role in this. And so. The idea would be that if you're gonna hire someone to do this, you would expect them to be interviewing all those people that they're working in collaboration with those people. That they're hearing where we wanna go um and what our goals are um for education in our buildings. Um, and they're part of that process. Um. So. That would be the ex- the expectation, I think.
Good, I'm really glad to hear that.
Thanks, Phil. I think Arthur, you were up next.
Yeah, just a quick question, cause I'm not sure. Does this board have a um facilities or building subcommittee or is this something that's gonna be tackled by the whole board?
Uh, we do have a facility subcommittee, but this would be something that the whole board would would be a part of. We wouldn't uh make that a subcommittee to report back. Um, I think in some ways the consultants or the firm would be the 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 group to then give all of us the recommendations. We wouldn't have to filter that.
Okay.
Um, I'm uh, with the caveat, unless there was a substantial need for time and the board then chose to not invest. So for example, we all did the Ed specs together and we saw how many hours and hours and hours of time we put together towards the Ed specs. We could have put the Ed specs to a subcommittee. To bring them back to the full board to review and and report out. That's not the way we did it. Um, but this board. Could choose to do that down the road if they felt that they did not want to invest the amount of time it took to do that. I think the interest is so high, I don't know who would wanna step off, not be attending that meeting. So I think our procedure will be that it'll be a a committee of the whole is what we call it for every one of the board to participate. Um, and it might include some special meetings because we would still need our regular meetings to do our regular business. Anne?
I just had a couple of things that we could, we should keep in mind if we do decide to go this route. Um, and number one would be if we're doing all of these repairs with CIP money. I think we also need to keep in mind what does the rest of the town need? Do we need fire trucks? Do we need, you know, I think we have to keep that in mind. Um, the other thing is that we would be getting no or very little reimbursement from the state, so we pretty much would be paying for. Most of our repairs that we're talking about. Um, and then. I think it might end up with disruption to the children. I know we'll plan it so that everything happens during the summer. But if we come back with a great big huge long list. You know, there's only so much that can be accomplished in three months, so I think we need to keep that in mind. And we're back to our same, um, you know, five hundred thousand dollars a year. That we're spending in duplication and it will also ri- ki- continue to have a high. Um, per pupil cost, per pupil cost for our. In our budget. So those are just some of the things that I think we need to consider when we're making this decision.
Thanks, Anne. Those are good considerations. And I do think, Phil, we should ask whoever the consultant is if we go that route. Um, to ask for some uh thoughts on timing, like, for example, if you can only do chimneys in the fall or it takes uh six months to get air conditioner parts. Or if something's especially disruptive to the students and needs to happen during a a break of longer than X number of weeks. So again, it would be useful to have somebody with school experience to understand the disruption issue, but to include that in the report that we expect from any consultant. Laura?
So just actually the way Anne just phrased her her comment just kind of. Got me thinking. Um, and I just wanna make, I I just clarify. So one option moving forward is to hire. A company, put an RFP out for, I think it's Architectural Engineering Services. I've got James Marshall's email here is also looking at. Um, to perform um of facilities, to do a, you know, inventory facilities report, whatever. We're now now forgetting the words. Um. And the idea behind that is we'll get the whole picture, we'll able to. Plan the best way to not just fix our schools. I completely agree with you, Brianna, right? But but to improve our schools um and to bring them up into the twenty-first century. Um, make them more efficient, make them more educationally effective. So that's the option we're talking about now, but but. It's just, and when you said, if we go with this, so then I'm thinking, well, if we don't go with this, what's the other option? So the other option is, a- and I can't think of any other, but going along, putting Band-Aids on. I- am I missing something or is that really, that's it? We we actually create a plan, we're strategic, we look at. The long term, you know, to make our school, to fix our schools, to get them where they should be. And I agree, our children deserve the best. Um, or. We just have to keep muddling along, putting Band-Aids on. Trying to keep our budgets as low as possible, which is, you know, has been the issue since I've lived in Wellington and and I and I get it. Nobody wants their taxes raised, but you get what you pay for too. So it's an investment and. I don't see another option, right? We either. Go for the long haul and make this investment or we continue putting Band-Aids on. Is, am I missing another option?
No, I think that what you're saying to some degree is that we have to be responsible stewards of the public's trust and the public funding that. W- we are able to to work with in a way that's responsible. And really, in my mind, the way to be responsible is to invest in the information. We need to make a long-term plan, so we don't do something stupid like painting the lines on the road right before you repaint it or something like that, right? So if we wanna be smart about um being good stewards, we need information. So the way to to do that is to have the information as complete as possible that will guide our. Uh, thinking so that we can make the best decisions possible at that. Uh, thinking so that we can make the best decisions possible at that point.
Laura, I think um, y- your question is probably the, the one that Is the biggest question in the room, and is that, do, do you feel as a board That the SBC has any other pre-K through grade, grade eight, one building option? That is the only other route besides fix it, because that's their current charge. One preschool through grade eight building. If the answer is no, we feel like they've done their work, we don't feel like they would be able to Pull anything off right now, just with uh, costs, with where we are uh, in the town with needs. Then if that answer is no, then it is to go back and do the facility studies and really Stick to some sort of ten-year plan and, and, you know, advocate for those things to not only fix, but improve. Um, because that's, then you have direction, right? We've been patching and patching and patching, and I've trained people Um, since I was a principal to stop putting duct tape on things and start fixing them right. Um, it costs money though. And so if we have a ten-year facilities plan, it would allow us to really advocate for that. Um, through the town and then i- if it gets through the town meetings, it gets through town meetings. If it doesn't, We had a plan and that's all you can, you can do. The only other thing I'll say about that is that one building option. It's very expensive right now. Everybody knows that. And uh, I was told that a building very near to us Would be twice as much money as it was when it was initially quoted three years ago. So figure that out uh, in our current fiscal times. Uh, it's, maybe it's just not the time to do that. Maybe we need to re- regroup and get that facility study done and start chipping away at it. It doesn't mean that these buildings are going to last forever, because this conversation is gonna happen again.
Brianna, I see you, you raised your hand, but you're also nodding. Was that just a, a thumbs up yes, or you have something else to add?
Listen, here's what I'm gonna say. We have a ten-year plan to fix, maintain, do our best to improve. Um, things are not going to get cheaper. Our buildings are not getting any younger, just like we're not. And enrollment, I mean, we can make some predictions, we can look at the history, but Who's to say? So here's what I really don't wanna see, is we get ten years down the road. We have put a ton of money into Hall Memorial and Center Schools. They're fixed, they're maintained, maybe they're even a little bit better, but we have spent Twice as much, three times as much as a different plan we could have taken action on now. So I think is, the word sustainable just keeps coming back in my mind over and over and over. How many times can you duct tape? How many times can you fix? I mean, even things that are old and broken and fixed Still are not. I don't know. They're not going to stay that way. I mean, it's just time, it's wear and tear. So any, this ten-year thing is just stressing me out, because all I see is dollar signs, dollar signs, dollar sign, and like That is not how my dad raised me to be fiscally responsible, frankly.
I just wanna clarify that we would not be hiring a facilities uh, consultant to give us a ten-year plan. They would give us information about the status of our current facilities and suggestions about Potential improvements and information about those. It's up to us to come up with the ten-year plan. And, you know, with support and help from uh, others with expertise in this area. But I just wanna clarify that we are the drivers of this bus. And so um, with that, we need to have our roadmap, we need to know where we're going. Um, but that's the decision of the Board of Education is to make those plans as we go ahead. So first, we need information, cuz we don't even have the map.
You have several routes, probably. That's what happens on maps now, right?
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Okay, um, so do we have a motion about a facility study? That's what I've heard a lot of talk about. Go ahead, Anne.
I move that we, um, do you put out an RFP? For a um, facility study to give us an, a list and estimation of cost For Um, repairing and renovating our two schools.
Thank you. Is there a second? The purposes of discussion, I'll second the motion. I think we're all, we're all having that post-dinner um, um, phase, right? Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Um, Phil, does the motion as it was made meet the needs you would have to develop an RFP, or do you need additional information in that?
No, I think um, my plan would be if you go this route Uh, to pull together an RFP to share with you in July. Um, and uh, Honestly, I, I would find out if the individual who we've named a thousand times in this call Uh, is, if his company was gonna bid on that, I wouldn't engage him. But if he was, if they were not going to Uh, bid on it, I would probably engage Jim Marshall Um, to help to make sure that we had a, a, all of the features in and then walk you through that in July. Uh, make that probably the core of your meeting. Uh, and then You'd put it out from there. It doesn't mean it's gonna happen, because you would just get the information back. Um, and I don't know if it's an RFQ, RFP, so it's qualifications and proposals at the same time, probably.
Yes.
Um, and so I'm not sure if Anne just said RFP, uh, if that's your meaning, that maybe it's just should say QP. It, you know, it might just be that you want me to gather that information.
A friendly amendment and to add uh, request for qualifications and proposals.
Yes, I would be happy to.
Thanks. Other thoughts, questions on the motion? Go ahead, Arthur.
Um, Phil, do we need to do anything about the cost of said RFQP?
No.
Cost anything to put the, the, the quote out. We're gonna get to the money part later. It, it'll be there. But it'd be interesting to see how much it's gonna come back at in terms of cost, for sure.
Correct.
Arthur, your hand is up.
Yeah, so Phil, I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm hearing correctly. You Y- you're possibly gonna engage James about creating the RFP, or about whether or not his company would bid?
So uh, I've done this before, where if I know there's a, a professional and they're gonna bid on a project, I do not engage them, because they should not have inside information. Um, you know, i- i- other than what they see in our meetings, right? If they watch our meetings, they're, we're, we're public. But if he said, no, we're not going to bid on this project, um, it's just not something we, we look for. Then I would just look to him and see if he would help. As honestly he did in the SBC. He reviewed several RFQs, RFPs with us and gave feedback and we made adjustments. So um, I would engage him as long as they weren't gonna bid. Um, and honestly, if we did engage him and then they did bid, I would recommend you disqualify them.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to, I wanted to make sure I heard correctly. That's why I just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
Okay, that's fair. Okay, we have a motion on the table with a friendly amendment to include qualifications. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of passing the motion to prepare and issue an RFP, RFQ For a facility study on our two buildings, signify by saying aye.
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 And it's unanimous, so that passes and we can move on to what's next on the agenda. Thank you all.
Hey, Michelle.
Coming back to that. Yes, Phil.
Can I make a suggestion to you?
Yeah.
Uh, I think for ease of discussion for the SBC, since you have passed that, I do believe you should make a recommendation that they write their report and submit that, their completion to the selectmen.
That's fair. Um, do I have a motion to that effect?
I still have.
Is there a second?
Second.
Arthur, thank you. Additional thoughts, comments on that? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to ask the S- School Building Committee for a report of their findings Before they, I don't know what the right word is.
And they're
And.
And.
Disband, I, before they disband, okay. Uh, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, also unanimous. So, uh, Phil, if you'll take care of passing that information back to the School Building Committee, I appreciate it. Okay, that concludes the regular business of the meeting at hand Um, for old business. Next on the agenda is present to speak. We welcome members of the community to join us on screen. Or if you, and if you wave your, come on video and wave your hand, we can recognize you, but you can also Use your reactions button to virtually raise your hand, so we can recognize you. Please start with your name and address. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes maximum. Um, and I see two folks with their hands up first. Um, and that is Nick first.
Hey, Nick, tell a forty-nine Myrtle. Uh, first, just wanna start off, if uh, Um, we do go the route with James, I, I think uh, he should excuse himself from further conversations. Um, if that happens and uh, at that point. Uh, I too walked the Mansfield School itself. Sure, it's nice, it's shiny, it's brand new. Um, but honestly, looking past the brand new, there was nothing different. I was in Center School today. There's nothing different Other than new furniture, um, other than a smart TV, which, okay, fine. We, you know, maybe we can back, back that and put that in the classroom, so I can understand that. But otherwise, it doesn't justify the fifty million that they spent. Uh, even from a se- uh, security standpoint, I mean, some of the classrooms were over ten feet off the ground with emergency windows. I, I don't know how, you start having kids jumping out windows, uh, that's a smart idea, but That was their uh, design. Uh, and then even in their classrooms, they had no closet for kids to gather. Uh, in case, the worst-case scenario or any of that, you know, security was awful, in my opinion, but that's all I have. Thanks.
Uh, the second hand I saw is from someone with the name Abercrombie. If you would please come off of mute and identify your full name and address.
Hi, this is Melissa Abercrombie at two thirty-eight Tollentown Pike in Wellington. Um, just real quick, a couple of things. Um, as someone who lives in Wellington, I just wanna make sure that Um, I'm heard that maintaining is not acceptable. I very much agreed with Brianna's comments. And that it was also said that we have to gather information and do our own research first, but That was supposed to have been done, I thought, when the numbers were provided for either a new school at the cost of Whatever those were, or fixes at the cost of whatever the numbers were. And um, it just seems to me that To have the trust of the public, so that we know that the money that's being voted for is being spent to Better the schools that we currently have. Um, more information needs to be provided to the public. Um, and then I know that in April, there was a one million dollar Line in the budget pass, um, and I thought that was for the schools. And I've not seen or heard anything of that being any repairs or that going to any repairs. So I think that would also help in the public's knowledge and trust that, that things are moving forward. With, with a better plan. So um, that was all I really wanted to say.
Thank you, John Mitchell. I saw your hand up next.
Hi, John Mitchell, sixty-four Timber Lane. Um, I wanted to, I believe I heard Phil say that the staff was getting roughly two point seven five percent increase. And I just found that sad to hear, since the inflation rate this year so far is four point nine And eight percent last year, excuse me. That was the only negative thing I have. Everything else is good. Um, the in-person meetings, I feel that if you do an in-person meeting with a live feed on Facebook, like my district that I work at does, And then you can have a Zoom section that somebody has to manage. And they can speak there and you, that's the only hard part, is you have to have somebody that can manage that other part as the meeting is going on. Um, so people in person can talk and in Zoom can speak. And then Board, um, I'm happy to hear that the SBC that we're potentially recommending, that they disband and we start. I like to use the word, hopefully remodel the schools, not just Band-Aid it. I wanna slowly remodel over the next ten years. Okay, this wing will get a nice new whatever. Um, so then it's not just Band-Aid and duct tape all the time. Uh, that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other hands. Um, last call. Oh, Peter? You'll have to come off me, Peter.
Uh, good evening. Peter Latincich, ninety-seven Trask Road. Two comments, if I might. Um, the first was on the hybrid meeting discussion. Um, I, I would strongly urge you to consider returning to a hybrid meeting. Um, the general lack of transparency of your board, The unwillingness to share information typically with the townspeople has not enhanced your credibility. That was very evident throughout the School Building Committee process. And I think influenced the final outcome. And is especially troubling to me to hear that the sole focus was on the convenience of Board members who are elected representatives to your board and parents. There was no consideration in any of the discussion to the vast majority of the people who are not parents, but vote in this town for you. Um, they should all have access and you should be there. A good model is the Board of Selectmen. They view it as important that as board members, they attend their meetings. And then we expand that reach to the townspeople. Uh, I would strongly suggest you, you consider that as well. Um, with respect to your discussion tonight on moving forward, post referendum, Again, the conversation was troubling to listen to. Um, we, we heard that we, just looking at the comments I wrote down as I was listening, we need to do something. Um, then we heard that grants are still off the table, despite the fact that very shortly, the school Building Committee will dissolve. Um, yet, we don't think grants are available. Even though at the joint meeting, we heard that lead times for roofing material from our former chair, Who does this every day at University of Connecticut, is fourteen months. Yet, we're still not pursuing roofs, because we don't think grants are available, or still in jeopardy Is the phrase I, I jotted down. Then we also heard that the summers really aren't sufficient for any of this work. Um, and unlikely that these repairs would ever meet the ed specs that Apparently your board wishes to use for, that were designed for a consolidated K eight Would now be used for renovations and repairs.
Peter, we're running up against three minutes, if you can wrap up, please.
Well, Michelle, I guess I'm done then. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Are there others that wish to comment? Okay, seeing no other hands. Um, the board has, next on its agenda, board comment. So if you would like to, to comment back. Arthur, go ahead.
It seems, uh, every time I've watched these meetings prior, it seems there's a lot of hesitation to go first on board comments. I'll break the ice and go first on board comments. Um, I do wanna uh, send a, a special message to all the Wellington and, well, all the graduates in general of Region nineteen Of E O Smith. Um, their graduation was tonight. And I know some of my fellow board members there are handing out diplomas, uh, probably as I speak. Um, though it might be done. Um, so congratulations to all the high school students uh, on their graduation. Same goes for the Hall students and their promotion ceremony, which is gonna be on Thursday. Um, I do plan to be there, so hopefully I'll see some of the, some of the eighth-grade kids that recognize me from my subbing days. Um, and I know that the Hall Color War was yesterday and Centers Color War is tomorrow. So to all the Center School students, Mr. C will be there and uh, doing whatever color war things I need to do. Um, but I'll be happy to be there. Um, and just congratulations to all of our students On another successful year, uh, and onward and upward. Thank you.
Thank you, Arthur. Who's next? Tracy?
Um, I'll just, uh, no, reiterate, reiterate what Arthur said about congratulating the graduates From all, all of our schools and those moving up from center to hall as well. Um, A, a big thank you and can, and wish you well to Anita Mackin for her dedication of twenty-two years. for her dedication of twenty-two years. I had the opportunity to work with her in Center School and she is an amazing parent, so we appreciate her her time um or her time there. Uh best wishes to Nicole and welcome officially to Michelle since she's been working with us, but glad to have you onboard. Um and I'm really excited to hear about the DC trip. I I'm sure that others besides myself experienced that trip when we were growing up in eighth grade and I'm so excited that our students had that opportunity. Uh it's one thing to visit with your family. It is different to visit with your classmates because you get a different um lens on what's going on and you're able to apply what you've learned in school. So I'm really excited that uh they were able to do that and I hope we continue that in the future. And um I think that's good. It, I uh hope everybody has a great summer. It's my last day today, so I'm excited to start my summer.
Thank you for starting your summer with us. Who's next? Ann and then Laura.
Um I just wanted to thank all of the teachers and the staff and the kitchen help and everybody for a great year and wish everybody a relaxing summer before we all come back again in September.
Thanks, Ann. Laura, your hand was up next.
The even Ann took the words I was going to say, right? Um yeah, I just, this time of year is such an exciting year, so you know, just I don't know, the beginning of summer and people are graduating. I'm gonna be going to the eighth grade graduation also Thursday, which is always a little bit of a of a homecoming for me. Um so congratulations to to all the graduates. Um congratulations to the teachers and staff on another phenomenal year. Um so much energy, so much work and dedication um goes into everything um to provide a good education for our children. Just wanted to say farewell to those who are leaving. Tracy already mentioned and welcome to Michelle officially. Um want to thank Marcia for for keeping all of the stuff together. I know that that has to be so hard. Um Field Day, oh my gosh, Field Day has gotta be just one of the most wonderful days of the year. Um I'm so excited that the DC trip went well. I think, you know, it's just a phenomenal experience um and so glad that there weren't any big um any any issues. Um that was about it. Um hoping that everyone can enjoy some of the warm weather this summer. Hopefully not too hot. Hopefully the weather will stabilize. Um but yeah, have a wonderful summer.
Brianna?
Yes, thanks. Um I am thrilled about the DC trip and I'm really proud to be a part of a group that was able to make that happen for those students. And the world is a very big place, Wellington students. But you take a little bit of us everywhere you go, so don't you forget it. Um congratulations to our graduates of this year and also to the first-time or brand-new Wellington teachers. You made it. And uh stay with us because it gets better and better and better. Um I also wanted to give a shout out to our music department, Mr. Cannon and Mr. Sonenberg and Mrs. Castles. What you've done with our music program this year just filled my heart with joy all year round and it was so fun to be with you all um the other night. And if you haven't seen Mrs. Tashawna's is um drumming skills, I really hope she'll make that happen again next year for you all because it is remarkable and she like really, really gets into it and it's fabulous. Um yeah, good luck to everybody. Oh, and uh indulge me for a minute to take a hot second to say thank you um to everyone who makes kids want to come to school and who help them find it fun again. Ooh, emotional. Mrs. McBee, thank you. You made my kid sad for the end of the school year and I have not seen that in a long, long time. So everything that you say to those kids, every little piece of you that you give to them, it matters. So, thanks.
Thanks for that, Brianna. That's certainly a heartfelt note that the difference that teachers and staff make in the lives of our kids makes a big difference. Um I also want to wish all of our graduates well in the world beyond where it takes them next, wherever that may be. Um I did want to make one note of uh clarification. Uh during the present to speak, someone had mentioned the million dollars for repairs. Uh the million dollars that was put in the CIP, the Capital Improvements Project Budget, is for next year, starting July first. So we don't have access to that funding yet. We are using some unspent funding now to repair buildings, but that million dollars is for next year and some of that, it sounds like we may use to start the the planning process and collecting information. So uh plans are underway, but join us again next month because by then it'll be July. So uh the board always welcomes uh comments from the community and parents and others. Uh you should feel free to email us your thoughts. If you're watching this at a time when you can't provide comments or your location when you can't, we do read all of your comments and we encourage you to um contact us. We do read all of that. Um even if it's not something that we then can act on at every single meeting, but it's important for us that you're a part of this process. And I want to thank my fellow board members and uh the staff and administration because you guys do this. Oh, the staff and the administration get paid for it, but the board members do this as a volunteer and it has been a heavy lift this year. This school year, we have attended more meetings than I can ever remember doing. Um we, you know, e- even in years where we've had multiple contract negotiations, this has been, this has been a tough year for all of us. And I just wanted to recognize your service back to the community, that you do this um out of the goodness of your hearts because none of us get paid to do this. We do this because we want to serve and and make the world a better place for our kids, so. Um thank you for all of that. And uh Mr. Stevens, if you would pass that on to the staff as well as your administrators, how much we appreciate their hard work this year.
Will do.
This is certainly was a lot more to do this year in some ways. Um with that, we come to the portion of our agenda where we're going to move into executive session to address the superintendent evaluation that we do annually and invite the superintendent to join us for at least the first part um of that meeting. Um and to do so, I think we need a motion. So I move that we move into executive session to address the superintendent evaluation and invite the superintendent to come with us. So we need a second and
A second.
Thank you, Laura. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous, so we can do that. So thank you, all of you who've joined us um from the audience, but we're gonna have to ask you to step out now. We should not put them out because I don't wanna uh eliminate their potential for joining in the future and there may be some consequences if we kick people out.
I'm gonna pause the recording too.
Okay, thank you.
Eight, eight forty-one.
Okay. Okay, so it is now nine ten PM and I reconvene our Board of Education meeting following our executive session. Um and we are now recording again. Um I'd like to make a motion for the record that um we renew uh Superintendent Stevens' contract for another year um with the uh minor edit as amended and including a two point seven five percent increase in salary for the next year. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Laura. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Okay. So uh let's move ahead to a vote and I'm, we'll do this roll calls just so I can take it through and make sure that it's on the record for whoever's doing our minutes later. No, let's let's try first. All those in favor of the motion at hand to approve the renewed contract and the two point seven five percent salary increase, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. We don't have to do roll call. And I know that's not just because you're tired, but it is uh now nine eleven. Um and I think we can take a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Laura. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ann. All in favor of adjourning the meeting for tonight, signify by saying aye.
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 That was also unanimous. Okay, thank you all for your time and service. Enjoy the summer. I will see you again next month, if not sooner.